All right, we will call this a recognition of the Harris County Board of Commissioners August 17th meeting at the border. If Commissioner Andrew will give our implication.
Thank you, sir. To have you, Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for this beautiful county in which we live. Lord, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts because of things that are going on throughout the world. We pray for people in Haiti, Lord. We pray for the Afghans, Lord, all of this going on there. We pray, God, that you would protect and heal this world. We pray for the people who are suffering from COVID. We thank you, Lord, for your many blessings in spite of all of that. We pray that you would give us wisdom to make good decisions in Jesus' name.
Everyone will stand with a pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of English States. One nation, under God, in the Israel, with the routine of justice for all.
All right, the first thing on our agenda is the minutes from the regular session of August 3rd, 2021, planned session of July 26th, 2021, and the call sessions of 11:00 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. of August 10th, 2021. We have a motion to approve the witness.
I'll make the motion, just for it.
A motion, do we have a second?
No, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Minutes are approved. Do we have any other appearances, assistants, other Mr. Kaminsky? Mr. Kaminsky, if you would like to come up and speak at this time, you have five minutes to make your comments, and Mr. Dowling will be clocking you.
Are we ready with the clock? Thank you very much for having me on the agenda. My purpose today is to bring you up to date with pickleball. And some of you may not know what pickleball is. I'm going to bring you, I sent all of you by way of email a copy of the pickleball agenda or pickleball fact media sheet for 2021. I hope they had a chance to take a look at that. But I'm not going to take, you know, take a chance to all of that once. Let me say this, if we, if the county does not activate a pickleball program, we will be way behind other counties in the immediate area. And I'd like to take it through that. My name is John Kaminsky. I've been resident taxpayer here for around 30 years. I played tennis at Callaway for, since 1967. I'm from nowhere, from Atlanta. And so I played tennis all my life until three years ago. I picked up a pickleball paddle and haven't picked up a tennis racket since then. The difference between tennis, which I loved all my life, and pickleball is that pickleball is fun, which is a fun game. About, we have about 5 billion people playing pickleball on a regular basis in the United States, and I project that that's going to grow exponentially in the next 10 years. I've got experience, I'm a civil engineer, registered professional engineer in the state of Georgia. I have a good friend of ours who is also a pickle player, pickleball player, Jeff Rednick, and he's a registered architect. And I want to sort of blend those two things into what I'd like to ask the commissioners to consider. And if, I really don't want you to consider it, I want you to act on it. We need the pickleball outside facilities. And as I understand it, the school board is coming with a proposal to a bonding company to, with a two-pronged thing. We'd like to piggyback on that to install four, acquired, four pickleball courts. My estimate, and I don't, that used to be part of my position, is around $70,000. That does not include any of the grating, it does not include lighting, it does not include a covering of the facilities, that's for courts. It does include the asphalt, it does include the finished surface, it includes high-foot fencing, benches, and awning over the benches, and the lining of the courts. I'd like to invite you, in coordination with the, with the parts of our aviation, we are putting a clinic on, on the 28th. I'd like to invite all of you to attend it from 10 to 12. Well, it's a Saturday, and you're certainly all invited to come and participate, or at least to watch, watching. Pickleball is played, look how it's played with a wiffle ball type thing, it's played to the net. It's somewhere in between tennis and ping pong, it's right in between that, played on a court 20 feet by 44 feet, you know, with a net. So we'll go quickly through what the fact sheet is, and then we'll come back and summarize it, if we can do that. The history, it's, the history of pickleball's long-standing has started out in the state of Florida, state of Washington. Talk about the court, the equipment, tournaments. Spaulding County is putting on a tournament in September, which is $60,000 prize money for the professionals. They also include averages, I had, Auburn put on a tournament two months ago with around $50,000 prize money. They had 2,000 participants at that presentation. So what we say, an operation which we can draw people into the area, and I think it would be good for the county, it would be good for the sport. There are, there's two ways in which we can raise some money for the sport. One is that the Pickleball Association, National Pickleball Association, will contribute $250 for each member, pickleball member, to provide equipment, paddles and balls. It'll also give $350 to the, can I ask for two more minutes?
Well, I don't believe we can give you two more minutes because you only have five, and that's kind of what the rules are for the, for the.
Well, since I'm the only, as I understand it, the only person here, two minutes shouldn't be too much to ask. I'd like to summarize it.
That'd be perfectly fine.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. So in summary, in the two minutes that I have here, I gave you the sheets here, then we showed the Obalika Auburn facility, which is a completely covered facility. It shows a Spaulding County operation also, which I, which I sent to you, which they're going to have a major tournament. And also the last two sheets, I think you've got two sheets, it shows a rendition on the actual property of the county at the red center, showing the eight tennis courts and the quad, well, it shows actually eight, eight pickleball courts, but we're only asking for four, for, we estimate a course of $70,000. And I think this money could be readily available, you know, either through splash money or through monies from these areas. Appreciate your attention, and I would like to consider piggybacking my proposal to this new operation.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on down to the, see, we have no old business, am I correct, Nancy? All right, over to new business. We have the taxpayers, the millage rate over here. So I have a public hearing order at this time. This is the last of the three public hearings the county has required to hold regarding notice of intent to increase property taxes. Harris County Board of Commissioners have tentatively adopted a 2021 millage rate, which will require an increase in property taxes by 1.68% in the countywide less West Point area, and by 0.52% in the West Point area. This tentative increase will result in a millage of 9.38 mils, an increase of 0.155 mils in the countywide less West Point area. Without this tentative tax increase, the millage rate will be no more than 9.225 mils. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $225,000 is approximately $13.95, and the proposed tax increase for a non-homestead property with a fair market value of $150,000 is approximately $9.30. In the West Point area, this tentative increase will result in a millage rate of 5.628 mils and an increase of 0.29 mils. Without the tentative tax increase, the millage rate will be no more than 5.599 mils. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $175,000 is approximately $2.03, and the proposed tax increase for a non-homestead property with a fair market value of $100,000 is approximately $1.16. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Or anyone that wants to speak against? My hearing done, I will close this public hearing. The next item is to set the millage rate. The county was required to hold three public hearings regarding notice of intent to increase property taxes. The public hearings were held on August 10th at 11:00 a.m., 6:30 p.m., and during tonight's meeting. Randy Dowling, county manager, Wayne Morris, chief tax president, and Victor James, tax commissioner, will be present to respond to questions. Do I have a motion to set the county's millage rate?
I'll make a motion that we set the county's millage rate at 9.38 mils, and the school millage rate at 18.26 mils, that we would collect the school board's millage rate. Portion, excuse me, one point, one more point. The portion of West Point within the county of 5.628. So we'll collect the school boards, and we'll set ours at those rates.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor? All opposed? All right, our millage rate hasn't been set. Correct me if I'm not wrong, Randy, but that's the same millage rate we have that lasts, what, two, three years?
The most recent one, we have, we've had 9.38 since 2019.
Thank you, sir.
So three years in a row.
All right, moving on down to the, under new business, we have the first reading of the alcohol application of Kim Tharp, Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce is having a special event at FDR Roosevelt State Park, during which alcohol will be provided, distributed, and given away. And the alcohol ordinance requires temporary special event license for such an event. Kim Tharp, as the president of the chamber, has applied for a temporary special event. The event will be held September 11th, 2021, at Lake Franklin Event Center. It does meet the qualifications, and it's recommended by the sheriff's office, Hawks' Sheriff's Office, which is approval. The Health Department, meaning Development Department, do not have to have this recommendation. Ms. Tharp, would you like to make any comments?
No, well, yes, sir, I would, thank you, no. Thank you for allowing me to do so. We are really excited. This is the first event that we are hosting through our explore Harris County GA tourism efforts, and we are promoting it regionally to invite people from, not only within the county, but from outside the county to come join us at one of the greatest hidden gems that FDR has. Very few people that don't live in Harris County have not went up to the Lake Franklin Event Center. We are, we have secured, Jamie Keating is our celebrity chef, and he is building his menu from, mainly from the farms in Harris County. Dr. Andrews is there to provide some vegetables for that as well. We'll also have representation from farmer farms in Harris County as well. So we're really excited about this event, and thank y'all for the opportunity to have it.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Ms. Tharp, the second reading of this application is scheduled to be heard September 7th, at which the board will take action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can dance and flowers, okay, show them.
Our next item is the appointment to the regulation board. A vacancy which expires 12/31/2023 exists on the regulation board with representatives of the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association. The Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association has recommended that Sandra Moss currently an at-large member be appointed to represent the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association to complete the term formerly held by Brandon Fletcher. Ms. Moss has resigned her position as an at-large member in order to be appointed as a representative for the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association. With the appointment of Ms. Moss as the Pine Mountain Youth Sports representative, the at-large position will be vacant, for which any commissioner may make a recommendation, recommendation to fill the vacant tonight or at first date, a term of which will expire 12/31/23. I will say this, Mr. Fletcher had resigned because he got, became a pastor of a different church outside of the county, and so he is not able to get back to meetings. That is the only reason he resigned. He was doing a fine job off at that park. Ms. Moss, who had been our at-large representative on the red board for a while, Pine Mountain Youth Sports has a rule that two members can't be on the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association board at the same time as their husband and wife. Her husband agreed through them to step down off the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association board so that she could move from at-large to the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association representative on the red board, because we know, in which we've lived many years, we've had the, kind of almost like a revolving door for that, and so that is why this is taking place. So just, I'll just give you all a little background of why we're, we were having to do this, and we feel like since Ms. Moss and Sandra have been on the board as at-large for a while, that would be the perfect fit for the Pine Mountain representative. And we would need a motion and a vote needed to appoint Ms. Moss as Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association rep, and I'll make the motion to appoint Ms. Moss as Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association representative. Having a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? I'd like Ms. Moss to be appointed. Is there anyone that has someone in mind to take the at-large position?
I do. I have someone who's contacted me, a Simon Williamson, who's a homegrown Harris County young lady. She is a teacher at Preside, she has four children, ages 10 to 18. All four have participated over the last 14 years in soccer. The youngest now does not participate in soccer, she chose another sport. But Ms. Williamson has been associated with the Soccer Association for 14 years as the vice president. She's currently there, game scheduler. She's been their rooms expert. So she has expressed an interest in serving on the red board for that at-large seat. I did talk to a couple of other people who know her, and they did give her glowing recommendations, and she's a very hard woman. So I would like to recommend Simon Williamson to fill that, the at-large seat of Ms. Moss.
And I'll second that motion. I know, and she has been a real hard worker of soccer, but I also say this, we almost had her appointed a couple of years ago, but she was not on the Pine Mountain Youth Sports Association board at the time, and we did not have that large position open at that time. So I know she has been on the board previously. There being a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you.
And Nancy, you'll let the chairman know?
I'll give a contact.
Thanks, ma'am. All right, moving on down to the county manager, Mr. County Manager.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Board of Commissioners, item number seven, speed table program consideration of this new program. County staff was requested several months ago to prepare a speed table program as a traffic calming measure for the board's consideration. County staff have reviewed the Georgia Department of Transportation speed table guidelines, along with about five other Georgia government speed table programs, in order to prepare the county's speed table program. This proposed program was reviewed by the board during July 26th retreat. At that retreat, the board wanted to know more about the cost of the speed tables. According to the research we conducted, a rubber speed table made with recycled material, 21 feet long, 22 and a half feet wide, and 3 inches high, which is basically the GDOT's specifications, would cost about $10,000 to purchase and install. An asphalt or concrete speed table would cost about $7,000 to $8,000 roughly. Since a series of speed tables may be used to solve a traffic calming issue, multiple speed tables may be needed in a particular subdivision or application. So a motion was needed tonight to initiate this speed table program as prepared. You can see in their agenda package, you have a sample two-page program that was again crafted for many other Georgia government speed table programs. You can see GDOT's guidelines for speed tables, along with a proposed design specification for the speed table, as well as a cost estimate from a manufacturer of rubber speed tables. So do you have to answer any questions on board behalf before the project is initiated?
I have a question. In other counties that have a similar speed table program, do the property owners pay the full amount in each of those programs?
Most of the programs, the county did make the people who wanted them paid, through various different mechanisms.
Actually, the county ought to have some skin in the game. I would, I think I would prefer that the county pay half, and residents pay half, that that might be a more fair way to implement the program. Of course, we can't predict how many, so we might say in the first year, let's just say we put $25,000, and we would pay half up to that amount, and then we might give us a field for what we're looking for. I don't know how they actually feel about it, but I just think we ought to pay a little bit of it, since it's going to be on the county road.
Again, I looked at five or six of them. They all did about the same, some had little peculiarities here and there, but primarily most of them, the citizens paid for the actual cost of installation, or the removal of the speed tables, wasn't they delighted anymore?
Well, I can agree with the citizens removing it, because they only got there because they asked for it.
Right.
So naturally, when it removed, if you paid, they have it removed, but I think because it is a safety issue, and a lot of our subdivisions, and we might have to skin it.
Some counties even put it on the annual tax bill, like the solar waste bill we have. Some counties, you know, received the money upfront and then did the project. So it's a, it's a different, every county has a different mechanism, but I got the common threads that made sense, and put it in this speed table program. But they, the all, the common thread among all of them was it's a petition-based program. The citizens petition themselves to have this speed publicized in their neighborhood, and did they pay for a portion of this program?
And that's 80%.
We did, again, every county's different, 80%, 90%, 75%, but 80% was like a common number.
But in ours, we have it, they're paying 100%.
No, 80% of the people wanted it, wanting them.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, 80% of the residents, yes, that's right.
So with that being said, as far as the removal, if you would think, and that just going off the materials and the way this is constructed, you would think that asphalt speed tables, if they're, they're a lower cost, would be a little bit more of a hindrance and a little bit more kind of a painting removal, especially at the time of this, and we're really looking at a recycling program. I think that'd be more versatile, so order a product, get it delivered, bolt it on, it's relatively quick and easy, and if it wants to be removed in the future, it can easily be removed. You know, by total work screws.
Well, there are three speed tables at the high school right now, and they just put them in, I'm going to say roughly about two weeks ago.
Asphalt?
They're in concrete. They're not asphalt, they're concrete, and they're right at where the speed bumps used to be, going out the back of the high school where the new middle school is going to be. And the speed bump deterred the kids speeding out the back. The speed tables, I don't think it really deterred it, although it has helped not tear up the undercarriage of cars, but now they're hitting the speed tables, and you know, they can almost, they can come off a little bit. You know, and I'm just saying, we actually do now have three speed tables that are in the county that we've never had before. My suggestion would be, before we really go whole hog, I think we ought to kind of take a, maybe take a minute and see how those speed tables work before we jump into a program, so then we'll know if we need to put money in, if we don't need to put money in, if we need to have the people, you know, basically do a little bit more research on it. I mean, you know, because I believe we all want to be safe, but if these are going on subdivision roads, not actually county roads, you know, the school is probably the best place to have some research because of the fact the kids really aren't flying up down roads at 60 miles an hour. I don't know. And to go back to the asphalt or the, the rubber, because they just have them put in within the last two minutes.
If we had speed tables in the drive, if you know anything about Harris County, where the central office is, there's internal roads there around the government center and the library. We had speed tables there, and it really did deter the speeding through there. And of course, you have to have signs that indicate you have a speed table coming up, but I'm not, I don't know what the dimensions are of the ones that I'm familiar with. 3 inches doesn't seem like much of a height, I think. What was the D O T?
D O T, 3 inches. I bet 3 inches is around as well.
So what kind of data would we collect from the high school?
I don't know. And that was going to be my next thing, and I'm not real sure, but other than I'm wanting, I, I've seen the kids go out there, and they're not tearing up the indicator to the car anymore. I'm not sure it's to turn the speed, but I'm not saying the kids should speed out the back anyway. I know the buses are going over, and there's, the way they've done them at the high school, which we may not have to do anywhere else, is one of them is a higher bump here, but it's flatter when you come off because of the way the road is at the high school. So going over it this way, it's a smooth transition. Coming the other way, you can, you can actually feel your car give you a little bump when you come off, come off of it. I don't know, because, you know, I've, I've always been used to speed bumps, hadn't done speed tables. And I'm, like I said, I'm not opposed to doing speed tables. I don't know if the county should put in 50%. At that part, I'd have to kind of look at.
Well, looking into this, too, it's sitting there and sending the recommendations for improvement design requirements was really not just one speed table, it was actually shown with a succession of two.
Right.
So the speed tables, you know, should be placed anywhere from 200, 500 feet apart to be able to, you know, adhere to the 20, 50 mile an hour, you know, speed though. So, you know, it's, you know, that's something else to consider, too. Are we looking at just placing one, and then putting a secondary? You'd be able to.
And they have three, they put three at the high school.
Yeah, because I know I've been, I've been approached by several people, you know, in my district wanting, you know, a speed table program. So I know this is how visibility exists as well.
What do we do with all the roads that are in subdivisions that aren't county road? If we're going to put in some money on the road, if we're going to put in some money on the road in the subdivision of the county on the road, but those people come to us on the speed table, are we just going to tell them they have to fund the whole thing?
They'll, they'll have to fund it 100%.
I mean, I'm saying that.
We are not even going to put it in.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, but you know, that's something we have to think about, if we're going to do this. I don't think anybody has opposed to the program, I'm just saying, we need to make sure we have everything in a row of, how we're going to do it.
I'd like to agree with you, I'd like to see how those work out. And I can't even remember the little town where it, and I told you that I had one of it two of them today. And they had the actual speed tables, which look like this, which I'd never seen before, on one of their back streets. They had about three in a row.
Looks like some, some of their downtown back street.
It was up close to them, but it was, it was a small town, but they had those back there. First time I had seen the actual speed table rather than the speed bump.
Yeah, the speed bump's terrible, the speed tables.
These were, these were, yeah. But, but I don't, I mean, I don't think it hurt, I mean. But, but I don't, I mean, I don't think it hurt, I mean, to wait. And maybe seeing those, what kind of, I don't know, maybe, maybe look a little more and see if we're really going to do the fifty percent.
Well, if we instituted a program of speed tables, the, the, the people still have to come to us and request it and get the petition and do all that. You know, we still, I, I don't know about the percentage because you're actually doing it for a small few people in a subdivision. You know.
Well, we could approve it and see how many we get, and then review it in a year and see if we want to make some changes. Just prove it like it is, and then pay it a hundred percent and see what we get.
Oh, yeah, and then, then, yeah, you're right.
See if we actually received any of the funds.
Right.
I know there are two subdivisions in my district that are just waiting on this, but if they find out they got to pay a hundred percent now, they may continue to work, I don't know.
Well, then they may not want the asphalt. I mean, they may not want the rubber, they may want the asphalt because it's cheaper. And like I said, we're not installing it, that's, that's on them.
Should we give them a choice?
Yeah, they should, that's, I agree. Or we might want to find out about the concrete, because, I mean, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that one of the high schools are concrete, they're not asphalt, it's not the black. Asphalt is usually normal, see, and it's not, I know it's not rubber.
Did a paving company put them in?
I'm assuming whoever paved the road, because they did the new entrance, or they paved entrance out the back to boot, do three entrances or two turn lanes and an end, I'm assuming that they did.
So that's permanent, it's not really a removal?
No, it's, it's permanent there on the back. And, and I, you know, it's, it's funny is that we have been doing our speed tables, and when they finally, uh, school started and we were able to come back in the back because the head had shut off, we weren't in school, the first thing I did is I saw the speed tables and I started laughing. I said, well, dang, we just had a meeting, you know, talking about speed tables. You know, so, but you, you're right, we can approve it, just see what happens, and then if we need to in a year, we can adjust.
Yeah, with provision, revisit.
Yeah.
I just have a question on, yes, if you give them a choice, it's going to, concrete's going to be more difficult to do because they're going to have to go back out there and, you know, make sure people aren't messing with the wet concrete. The asphalt would be, could be difficult because the prices go up. The rubberized would be the easiest, because if we order it, we put it down, you know, that might be the easiest, fastest way to get it in place.
And to remove it.
And to remove it.
Their paint will do it.
And if they're paying for it a hundred percent, really the county's really not allowed to do anything.
Other than just time and labor of putting it in.
Right.
I'd say, you know, I mean, I don't think that makes more sense.
Well, I think, I think we ought to probably leave the asphalt speed tables in there just in case you get a subdivision that would, would rather have asphalt based on the, the steps of their subdivision. But I think that you're, I think y'all are right, the rubber was probably more efficient, especially where we have to remove it. But if we approve this, we can always come back in a year and revisit the percentage of what we put in or what we have to do.
You know, I think I want to make a question to approve this with the, with the caveat there that we, I guess we revisit this in the years operating and be able to associate a hundred percent of the cost to the requesting.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion and seconds, if we have any other discussions. All right, all those in favor? All opposed? All right?
How do you propose, do people pay for it? What a good question.
It's, it's in there.
It's a, I believe it's in the packet, I don't know where, I read it somewhere.
Is it a front or on package?
No, 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 no. It needs to be, it needs to be read, I understand it. Who pays the speed tables?
Yes.
Is paid by the impacted property owners that own rural property on the affected roads or the subdivision. To recruit the county's investment, all installation costs will be calculated and paid by the impacted property owners prior to construction. The impacted property owners working through their designated community representative will have one hundred and twenty days after board approval to pay the county for installation or the application will lapse and we must restart and begin. Once a full amount is received by the county, construction will begin.
It's, it's very clear. All right. Any more discussion on that? All right, if not, let's move on down to the next item. Mr. Dowd.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair and Board Commissioners, this is a proposal for consideration for the Georgia Department of Transportation's 5311 Rural Transportation Program. Again, the board asked the staff to gather some information, and this information was discussed in detail at the retreat on July 26th. To go over some highlights of this public transportation program for rural areas, this program is, has been a long-established program through the Department of Transportation for many, many years. To provide citizens with curb-to-curb travel assistance to and for medical appointments, shopping, jobs, school, recreation, and senior citizen centers, and even to destinations in neighboring counties. Most counties in the state have this kind of rural public transit operation. About thirty-six of Georgia's one hundred and fifty-nine counties, including Harris County, do not have this type of public transit. So most counties have it, some don't, including Harris. There's no income or age restrictions to use this program. Currently, the 5311 program in this area is operated by the Lower Chattahoochee Regional Transit Authority with staff assistance from the River Valley Regional Commission. The Transit Authority consists of three counties currently, Quinman, Stewart, and Randolph. This regional authority contracted the third-party provider called RMS to operate all aspects of the program. The third-party operator is responsible for hiring all the drivers, training the drivers, accepting calls, and scheduling rides, providing insurance, maintaining events, reporting accidents, preparing GDOT required reports and other required and needed reports, having operating policies and procedures, conducting accounting, and resolving complaints. In general, if a citizen wants to use this program, it's typical of a third-party operator at least twenty-four hours in advance to schedule a trip. The capacity is checked to make sure the trip can be accommodated. Those of sixteen years or older must be accompanied by an adult. There's a very nominal fee for this service, usually in the one to three dollar range. This is a, this is an on-demand service. There are no fixed routes, bus stops, or pickup times. This program, if approved and funded, will be heavily advertised by the county and the third-party operator. Again, this, these vans are typically airport shuttle-top vans with passenger capacity of eleven to fourteen people per van, and those will share lists when needed. This, this program would operate Monday through Friday, eight to five, except holidays. If approved, the regional authority would have to include Harris County along with Quinman, Stewart, and Randolph to be part of that regional authority, and that can easily be done through local legislation in January. The cost of the county would be minimal to pay for small operating, operate, the small proportion of operating cost and subsidized capital cost for the vans. Expendee cost per year would be well under fifty thousand dollars and can be funded by SPOS funds. A GDOT application needs to be completed by December this year, and the regional transit authority along with the third-party operator will complete the application on behalf of the county before the deadline. The next step, if the board wants to pursue this program, would be for the board to approve their attached resolution and all, and any of the necessary documents to authorize the transit authority to file an application on the board's behalf and submit it to the GDOT by the deadline. If approved, this program can be budgeted for and begin early 2023, subject to availability of the needed vans. So a motion and a vote is needed to approve the attached resolution so the transit, so the regional transit authority can begin their application process and have it submitted to GDOT by their deadline date.
Randy, I'm just curious, the third party is normally based not in the county, but maybe in Columbus or Maricopa?
RMS is based in a city, in a very small city. I forgot what the name of it is. It's in one of those three counties.
Oh.
So that's where it's based, and that's where they take telephone calls from.
Okay.
And the dispatch will be a radio.
Well, I made the motion that we approve the resolution and other necessary documents for the Lord Chattahoochee River Transit Authority to file an application with GDOT on behalf of Harris County, because I do know we have a, a lot of elderly citizens that would use this service and need to use this service, and we haven't been able to provide it in a while. So I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Do I need to read the resolution, Nancy? Okay, thank you. That was a lot of words. Everybody's heard the motion and the second? All, any in discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. Mr. County Manager?
The next item is number nine, change order for Mercer Med Community Clinic HVAC System. Mr. Chair and Board Commissioners, this is a change order number one for the project that has been working on for many, many months now, the Mercer Medical Community Clinic at the old library the county owns. During June 1st of this year, the commission approved to spend forty-eight thousand dollars to replace the roof and a hundred and forty-three thousand to replace the HVAC system at the old library for a total of one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to run the old library to a community medical clinic, and all this was based on a little bit, and the amount was placed in the correct approved budget under SPOS 2019. While replacing the HVAC system, the contractor found that the existing ductwork had louder panel insulation on the inside and is very difficult to clean, and is recommending that the ducts be totally replaced to use as a medical office at, at its expense of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Since the county has agreed previously to be responsible for the HVAC system at this, for this project, Mercer Med has requested the county consider this change order. If this change was approved, funding can come from the county's federal A R P funds. So basically, when this project was approved several months ago, A R P funds existed, so these SPOS 2019 funds. As my recommendation to take all, to take all the funds earmarked for this project, the forty-eight thousand for the roof, the hundred and forty-three thousand for the HVAC system, and the change order, and apply all to the A R P. That, that's worth consideration, that'd be my recommendation, and keep SPOS 2019 money for other SPOS 2019 items. So basically, we're recommending a motion to vote, type the number one, approve the change order with a funding source from A R P, and then have all the other previously approved items also under A R P.
What, what are the previously approved?
The roof.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, you're not talking about A R P, the A R P on this one, but we haven't, we haven't anything with that yet. Okay, I need to ask Randy about the, the numbers on the shortfall for the entire project, and also the numbers for, you know, the fundraising group.
Yeah, so far, the board, the board is asking, how much is this project, what's the shortfall for this overall project? Not the county's portion, the county's portion is fully funded. The roof, HVAC, and the change order.
It's the county's.
Yep, we're fully funded.
Right.
Now, the overall project, that has the responsibility of the, of the donation committee, their shortfall is about sixty thousand, five hundred dollars currently for the overall project. So that's just some information.
And there's been discussions that we, A, either, there's been no approval, provide eighty-two thousand dollars toward that amount of money, or then we realize that we received something from A B A F or whatever that was.
Right.
Another forty thousand, so we've moved it to forty-two. My personal opinion, I would like to see that forty, since we did not know we were going to have to, to do a change order for thirty-seven, nine, sixteen, I would like to see that forty-two or whatever the number turns out to be go toward another project on our A R P list, maybe the courthouse, maybe internet, I don't know, but since we're going to have to approve an additional thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars that we have discussed very loosely, another forty-two thousand to the Mercer Med Clinic, I personally would like to see that forty-two thousand back to another project on that A R P list. Randy, choose that we can do that.
Yes, so help me understand, what is your thought process in lieu of this from SPOS to A R P and why you're making this regulation?
Well, A R P money is available, A R P money is exactly what Mercer Med, that the community clinic, that's what that funding is for, to help the community with medical needs. That's a perfect use of A R P funds. Then that will, then we, then the board can reallocate SPOS 19 funds for other SPOS 19 projects.
Now, that at one time, correct me if I'm wrong, at one time we talked about that any of that renovation for that library, if we did not use it, because at the time we did not know what we were going to use the building for, or renovate it for, that it could go toward the courthouse or things, right? I think that I'm pretty sure as well.
So any dollars that is SPOS 19 can be used for any of those over-approved projects. So any money that we.
So that would be, yes.
So, so that's SPOS 19 money for the forty-eight for the roof and a hundred and forty-three thousand for the HVAC. If it, if it's reallocated from SPOS 19 to A R P, then that's the money that can go toward the courthouse.
Right.
Yes, or any other SPO, over-approved projects is SPOS 19.
Right.
Yes. So that was my thought process there.
But the first thing we have to do is vote on the change order before we can get into all of that other stuff.
Yes.
Correct?
And my recommendation is to approve the change order, thirty-seven thousand, nine sixteen, coming from A R P funds.
So where would this money come from if we decided not to use ARC funds? Where would that come from?
It would come from SPOS, would it not? Or would it?
I thought SPOS was A R P. I'm thinking, on 2019.
It could, it could come from general fund, or I think it could, it could come also SPOS 2019, because that's where the other amount is also.
I thought that was one of the projects in 2019.
It is, it is. So it could come from general funds or SPOS 2019 or A R P. I'm recommending A R P.
How much money, and you may not know this, do we have left in SPOS 19 funds?
What?
Just enough, I mean.
Well, hey, for example, in SPOS 19, we, we allocated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the old library for its renovation.
Right.
So we have plenty of money remaining.
To do that.
Yes.
And if we don't use that, then we could allocate that toward the courthouse, but don't we also have SPOS 19 money for broadband?
Yes.
So we could allocate.
Any project.
Right, so we could actually take some of the money, whatever's left, have to go to the courthouse, have to go into our broadband.
But the difference with broadband, though, from what I'm understanding from the gratuity is like with the ARC fund itself, is this not, is not applicable to the gratuity clause? And the reason why it has to stay in Fund 230, so the reason why it has to stay in Fund 230 to be able to go towards broadband, to be able to utilize it, SPOS, you couldn't do that, it's still, it is still adhered to the gratuity clause.
County funds have to abide by the stitch gratuity funds.
Yes.
Federal money, we award, does not.
And who says it does not?
A C C G.
Yes, it.
And so A C C G.
The commissioners don't say, taken by A C C G.
That is a different one.
That they have noted recently.
Yes.
Or attorneys.
Or attorneys. They're not able to point to a, a particular case on all fours, but they believe that the proposition is defensible.
They just believe it's defended.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think there's something down the road.
Yeah, well.
That's what the A C C G.
We go to jail, you think A C C G gonna pay for it?
Well, let me ask you this, from a legal standpoint, isn't this the purpose of your, I guess, whenever you can interpret this, this, this off the interpretation of you guys, A C C G included?
Right, so when we were first looking at this issue, I reached out to A C C G to get their thoughts on, you know, how this broadband can be done based on what y'all had. their thoughts on, you know, how this broadband can be done, based on what y'all had, and their, of the opinion, and of, of the fact that you can't use the federal funds without violating the state gratuity clause, and there are ways to further mitigate it, such as owning particular property for a certain amount of time with an accelerated depreciation schedule, and then you turn it over to that entity to also further mitigate any challenge under the gratu, gratuity clause. But based on my initial review and discussion with ACCG, I am more comfortable with that proposition, which is these federal funds can be used without concerns under the state gratuity clause.
And with your depreciation clause that you were actually mentioning, which would actually kind of facilitate the discussion with, say, for instance, like we would lease, in this case, lease conduit that would be in the ground, lease it to a provider, and then over that time, over depreciation, then it would eventually go towards the provider being kept.
That's right. That's right. And then the idea is you're providing that over time for the, you know, the benefit that the county receives, and that provider providing those services.
Right, which would be an augmentation to the services provided to our neighbors or constituents of the county, which would be upgrading their broadband access or broadband technology, from a standpoint, correct?
That is correct. Um, but as I've always said from day one, I, I think to further mitigate any concerns, that the county needs to look at this as a holistic level, and not the debt at a regular level where you're looking to just assist one particular neighborhood or another, and so the county needs to look at this at a, on a comprehensive plan level, and find a way where it can facilitate the most things available, and provide the most broadband outreach as possible for the funds that it has. And one of those ways that we discussed doing that is working with the EMC, that those power, and those that, we can find a way to try to assist in providing broadband, for example, to all EMC customers, which of course would include a, a large portion of the unincorporated county, and that's just one consideration. And I know that, uh, that is applying for some of these state funds coming down from the federal government, with the idea that it would cover a decent portion of the underserved area of the county.
So Randy, can you tell us exactly where we are on that, working with the first round?
Okay. I sent an email out to everybody a couple days ago. Washington is giving out all kinds of money. A lot of money is going to the state, and the state has opened a grant program up for water, sewer, and broadband. They opened it up, they opened up a grant program August 1st, and the, the grant program ends August 31st. There's a 30-day window to submit for counties and cities and nonprofit organizations to submit grants to the state to improve water, sewer, or broadband. The county is in a position with our consultants to submit an application on the county's behalf for an elevated storage tank in the Mulberry Grove area to serve that area of the, of the 315 corridor. We're going to request about two million, the application being prepared right now within 31st deadline, our consultants, is going to be about a $2 million grant, and with maybe a $250,000 match from the county as matching money to have skin in the game. So a $2 million grant, $250,000 matching money from AARP, which is a suitable project for this money. So that's one application, $2 million gallon elevated storage tank, $2 million roughly, with the county putting in $250,000 for match money from AARP, and asking 400, 1.75 million from the, from the state brand to build that tank sometime next year, if the grant is offered. Diverse Power on our behalf is going to also apply for broadband money for the northeast part of the county and the northwest part of the county. They're going to put an application in of about $25 million in that, in those general areas of the county and other counties, but primarily Harris County. And they would like to have a letter of support, so to prove to the grant reviewers that they have got county input and skin in the game. And for that, I'm recommending a letter of support be given to Diverse Power for their application by December, by August 31st, and, and authorizing a quarter million dollars, at least a quarter million dollars from AARP funds as matching money to have skin in the game, so the reviewers at the state can see that the county is serious about Diverse Power's application and has put in AARP money as matching funds. So those are the two applications that we're going to submit, or we hope to submit, on August 31st deadline. Most cities and counties are not submitting, they have no technical expertise, they have no time, they have, they have, they just, most counties just don't know what to do. So we cobbled together these two projects because the state, because the state grant program. Absent the state grant program, we wouldn't be doing this. But there's a lot, there's hundreds of millions of dollars available in this one grant program. It's highly political, the reviewers are state reps, state senators, and state level, high-level state-level bureaucrats. So it's highly political, so there is the all aspects of it, there is the coordination between the government and, and the broadband providers. And since it's federal AARP money, the gratuity clause doesn't have to be adhered to.
If, if we, if we did that, and this is for Russell, and it's for two areas of the county, you said, the north, west, okay, is that, Russell mentioned a concern.
Russell, can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear mainly.
Okay.
Okay. He mentioned a concern that it be for certain areas. So if you could ask him, if he can't hear me, if you could ask him, would that be a concern?
Hey, Russell, in Diverse Power's application, their primary goals is where they have infrastructure, and that's in the northwest part of the county and the northeast part of the county, in various subdivisions in those two areas. Because they don't have many, if they don't have much infrastructure in the southern part of the county, will that be an issue or a problem?
That we're.
From a gratuity standpoint?
That we was talking about, when he was.
Or, or from a grander point of view?
Yeah.
You know, going.
I don't think so, because I, I think, I think this latest proposal, as I understand it from you, Randy, is a good compromise, because it allows Diverse to go after money for areas that they already had infrastructure in, and so they are able to expand broadband at a cheaper rate in that area. And it also benefits the county, because it covers a lot of the underserved areas of the county that of course we're trying to get to.
That's, that's exactly.
Thank you.
All right, let me ask you this question, can we use the SPOSS 19 money that we earmarked for broadband to buy the conduit that Commissioner Irons was talking about? Because if we're buying the conduit and we own it, and then we lease it to them, are we able to use that SPOSS 19 money, or do we actually have money in SPOSS 19 that we earmarked broadband that we can never use?
I'm going to look at how the language is written, and the SPOSS 19 can give you a full answer on that. I don't know if I can answer that on the spot, I don't seem exactly how it was written.
Right.
Because as you know, when you, when you look on SPOSS, depending on the language and that SPOSS, you may or may not be limited on how you can spend it. But I guess to take a step back and answer your general question, which is, do I think that, is there a way that we can use the SPOSS money for broadband? That answer would be yes. You know, we, we certainly can find a way to use our SPOSS money for broadband.
And then too, as far as having a, I guess, a, you know, a request on, a request, a requirement for our letters of support to the EMC, would, I would like to be able to see what their proposed technology types are, and also what their proposed service areas are. Northeast and northwest of Harris, of Harris County is vague, so I would really like to know what their, their targeted areas are, and also how many, what homes there, or how many homes that they're, they're saying that they can actually provide or access, right? Because underserved is really definitive, defined really by the 25 and 3 definition that the state, which came up with broadband ready, right? So where exactly are they trying to service in those two targeted areas? How many people are they trying to target, or do they propose to target, and what technology types are they bringing to the board?
All right, well, not to cut you off, but considering that we're really only talking about trying to do this change order, that's what we need to, to kind of focus on with this. I mean, all of that discussion is good discussion, and we need to have it. Uh, you know, because if we can buy the conduit and lease it, that might be a way to, to do it that way too. All right, so what we really got to decide is what we want to do on this change order, we know we're going to spend $191,000. We put the change order of $37,916, which is up to about, what, $230,000?
$220,000 change.
Right, so that's what we know, that we have already said we were going to do for Mercer, the $191, they needed another roughly $40,000 for that. All right, and you're recommending the $37,916 come out of AARP money?
Yes.
That's what you're recommending there?
Yes.
For, for the change order only?
Yes.
Not talk about anything else?
Correct. Because the other money has come out of SPOSS 19.
That's correct.
And we can keep it there.
Right, that's what, then, all we're voting on is $37,916.
From AARP.
From AARP.
Change order number one.
All right. Well, I make the motion that we do the change order of $37,916 from the AARP funds, because I don't think $37,916 is going to hurt us with that, those funds that we have on any of the other projects that we're trying to do.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
The question I have, I thought, Randy, you said that you wanted to take the full voting.
That'd be another motion. That's another motion. We ain't, we ain't got there yet.
So I'm presenting my cause as is.
Right. So right now, all we're doing is $37,916 out of AARP money, nothing else?
Nothing else, as presented.
All in favor of the change order of $37,916? All opposed? All right, that passes. Now, the other thing you were proposing was to take the $191,000 from SPOSS 19 that we've already allocated to come out of AARP money.
Yes.
I think we probably ought to, since we've allocated it, I think we ought to leave it where it is, and not try to get into the weeds of this and that. We know we have that money there, we know that we agreed to do it there, I say we just leave it?
As is.
As is.
SPOSS money.
SPOSS 19. Yeah, I say we just leave that $191 as is.
And considering that's what we, you know, all of our constituents that we're going to use that money for.
That, that's right.
It's the, it's in the approved budget that way.
Right.
Done.
And then any other SPOSS money we have left over, at that time, we can look at adding it to, we, what we already have for broadband in SPOSS, or we add to the courthouse at that time at the later date? Because you said that we have about $350,000 for Mercer Med.
No.
$350,000 to run the old library, right?
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, for the old library.
And we've used $191 of it, and no more should come from it.
That's right, so whatever, so whatever that's left, then we can decide if we want to put some of that toward what we already have in SPOSS 19 broadband, or toward the courthouse, or vote, or whatever. We can discuss that at a later time.
Yes.
So roughly $159,000 left.
Yeah, all right.
That's if you collect.
That's, that's right, that's what we said.
That's if you collect that money from SPOSS.
And right now, we may owe it.
Right.
But in the future.
All right, so that's, that's approved for the change order. Let's go down to County Manager and go on to, you probably got this.
My favorite part.
Can I make one comment before, remember, I don't know if you y'all were on the town hall call last night with our House of Representatives, Representative from Congress, but you know, next week is the, they're going back next week, and the House to open the infrastructure bill and the reconciliation bill. And one of the things that he made reference to in the call last night was that the infrastructure bill, there is money for broadband. He also made the comment that he thought it would not help us one penny in this district. Yeah, he said, you heard it, yeah. He said, I don't think that we will ever see a amount of that money if it's back. So I just thought, I just thought that was interesting, um, I think he has his reasons for thinking that, and I won't go into what those are, but I thought that was, I thought that was interesting, that he said that.
Perfect work, hitting the top ones. Number four, complete the update of the county's land and Dalton codes. We're going to file the application on September 20th. The first reading will be on October 20th at the planning commission level. The second reading and adoption will be November 2nd at the board level, and the UDC goes into effect on November the 16th, if everything goes well during the public hearings. Number eight, prison roof, the bit, we are preparing bits fest to go out next week. Number 11, the annual L-Meag resourcing program. I'm hoping to have the list of roads for the board to approve at the next meeting to send to GDOT for that annual resourcing road program. Number 18, Ellison Park. We are developing that park every day, we're doing a lot of land clearing, we've found a place for the maintenance facility, several pavilions, we've ordered the gates, the signs, we've gotten, we've received parking blocks. So we're, we're getting ready to, to develop it, and, and there's, there's been a lot of land clearing, it's starting to look like a park now, so that is ongoing. And the new Ellis Lee Park Care paper has been hired, he begins Monday. So we will have a full-time person with an inmate group there, full-time, getting the park developed, with the assistance of Public Works, the county prison, and a lot of other folks.
Is it a long person?
We will. Number 22, Phase 4 of the Battle of War Trail, that is ongoing, and that should be completed by early December of this year. All the vehicles and the budget has been approved, that has been approved has been ordered, they will be here till middle of next year. Number 44, the roof and the HVAC system of the old library, that is continuing, and the board has approved a change order for that, using SPOSS 19 funds and some AARP funds. Number 45, the impact fee study, that is progressing, and we should have a meeting with the committee very soon, hopefully next month, to keep, to keep that project moving.
Who's going to have the meeting? Who's having the meeting?
The impact fee committee.
Yeah, I got that, I know that, but you said, wait, we have a meeting, this is.
The impact fee committee.
Oh, okay, just the committee.
The impact fee committee.
I got you.
We'll have a meeting probably September to keep that project moving.
I got you.
So you can see in the SPOSS charts, what we collected for the year, now, a whole year is, whole fiscal year is done on SPOSS, then lost, we're at 181%. So last year, when we, when we prepared the budget, under COVID, under COVID, we thought we could get a lot in last tax revenue, the opposite occurred. So you can see that last year, the county received in SPOSS 2.9 million. This year, we got 3.6 in the era of COVID.
I'm big on COVID.
Oh, keep smiling.
So the difference was, I don't really, was through the new bill passed by the governor to be able to give us, I guess, a little tax improvement, e-commerce?
Um, not really, no. I attribute this to, instead of people going to the brick and mortar stores on Walmart, and Publix, and Kroger, and Target in a neighboring county, they ordered on the telephone it to be delivered to their home and businesses in the county.
That's what I'm saying.
And that made all the difference in the world.
That's what I'm saying.
And people set home and order stuff, if you order stuff, the sales tax comes to the county on which it's ordered, not where it was purchased.
Resignation from e-commerce.
Exactly, that is an e-commerce thing. I hope that. I hope that model stays active. People don't work brick and mortar stores, they still buy on Amazon and other e-commerce sites.
What does that mean, the Dollar General didn't curse?
People with the dollar.
They're the ones that have to produce and all of the Dollar Generals.
So we received a lot more SPOS money, a lot more lost money, 156%. Again, half a million dollars more than the previous this year. Taste loss, same situation. Single family owned building permits in July was 24. So we're keeping track of single family owned building permits. So it's keeping track of the previous years. And my, the most interesting chart is the subway's tonnage disposal. In July, it was over 1,700 tons. It has, it was 1,700 tons one time last fiscal year and none in the previous fiscal year. So we are seeing a, a, a dramatic tick up in subway's tonnage in the county that we're processing. Be happy to answer any questions where we have on the board.
Just refresh, I mean, we're on the loss, is it this year or next year that we negotiate, we're negotiating the loss?
Every 10 years, it'll be...
It'll be next year?
It'll be, I think it has to be done...
I was thinking it's coming up.
It's about a year away.
Okay.
So loss negotiations are done every 10 years, and it's about one year away.
Okay, and the taste loss will be alerted on, in next year?
We believe more to 2022.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
All right, no more questions for our County Manager?
But while we're talking about the port of work, can we go back to the letter of support to Diverse Power?
Or the grant in general?
Yes, yes. So, so actually, we're going to apply for the elevated water tank at Mulberry Grove in the 315 regional area and have matching funds from ARP of a quarter million dollars for that project.
You mean the left?
Sorry, is that from, you talking about the water tank and diverse?
No, the water tank, the county's, the county's going to apply for the state grant due August 31st.
Two separate grants.
We're going to apply for one grant ourselves for the elevated water tank, $2 million roughly, the consultant's working on it, the 2 million gallon, $2 million elevated storage tank in the Mulberry Grove area with a $250,000 match from ARP. That's what we want to submit.
And diverse will submit that grant.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so my question is, do you want a motion for that as well as a motion for the letter of support?
Yes.
Do you want them in the same motion, or you want two different motions?
Two, two different ways.
Okay.
Okay, so there's the elevated tank. We're doing it correctly on behalf of Harris County Government.
Well, I'll make the motion that we do the elevated tank using the matching from the ARP money for the grant. Is that what you mean?
Perfect.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion over that? All in favor?
Thank you. Because these grants, you know, it was a 30-day window, we're moving fast to put all that stuff together.
So now you need a motion for the letter of support for diverse power and using $250,000 of the ARP money to go with that to show the state that we are very serious about trying to get broadband access, is that correct?
That's correct.
I made that motion.
Second.
Can we add the requirements I was requesting for technology based on where they're specifically targeting? I understand northeast and northwest.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can ask, we're not the ones doing the grant.
We can request.
But we're requesting, I'll be able to manage.
As, as information.
Yeah, that's...
When I was speaking with Randy Shepherd from Diverse Power the other day, it is their area that's from I-85 all the way to Charlotte, is what he told me.
That's what I understood when I spoke with...
The State I-85 all the way to Charlotte, so it's through, have it in Pine Mountain Valley, Pine Mountain, not, but around Pine Mountain, Pine Mountain Valley to Charlotte.
From the Whitefield area that way.
109, that area there. And, you know, I don't know the technologies, so...
All their customers base.
But they're customer-based.
Basically, the top half of the county, but from what I was doing when I spoke with them, basically like Whitefield, that area, all the way over to the shallow area through that, that's, that's all I got. I didn't get off the technology stuff, but that's kind of what I was talking. But I, I will admit my motion to ask if they would give us some information items only based on exactly where the thing is going to go, especially if we're going to have to provide a conduit in some of the area.
And since it's a competitive grant, I don't know if they really want to disclose everything that they have in it or not.
Right, huh?
But...
But what information they can give us. All right, so I made that as a motion. Thank you. Everybody understand that? Just got to talk around a little bit. You got that, Ms. Nancy?
Yep.
All right, do we have a second? Oh, we did have, we have a second.
I seconded it.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right. Now I believe we're on to the County Attorney, Mr. Ritt.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. I have a number of letters for the board's consideration as an integral agreement with the school district for the storage of county records as well as office space for the board of elections. As the board is well aware, we entered into an agreement or an MOU with the school district on the Mercer bed clinic project. And as part of that, the school district agreed to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the county for one year, for 50 years, to lease the school property to the county for record storage, board of election offices, as well as space that we can use as a voting location. The county staff and other county officials have visited the school facilities and have aimed them to be sufficient for the above purposes. A proposed intergovernmental agreement was prepared, I reviewed, and the Board of Education approved it during their August 12th meeting. This agreement will allow both county records, including judicial records and election equipment, to be consolidated to one location for better management and allow the board of elections to have more office space and voting locations. With the consolidation of the county records, the old house located on State Route 116, 501 Center, will be empty of the records and offered to the volunteer fire department for live fire exercises or torn down by public works. A motion if there is needed. If approved, the intergovernmental agreement will begin on September 1st, and records will be moved into the facilities sooner or after.
Well, I know we've been talking about that, so I'll make the motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement with Board of Education for the storage of county records and the board of elections' offices to be moved over to what was the old Carver High School, Harris County Carverville School, and then Performing Learning Center, because I, we all know that we need some space for our board of elections when we have early voting.
Thank you.
I heard an amen from someone.
I'll second that.
We have a second, and we have any other discussion? Everyone in favor? All opposed? All right, it's approved.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. The next item on the agenda is item number 12, which is a modification to a GFA loan for the water heater project. As the board is well aware, a GFA loan is obtained in connection with the water heater replacement project. It had an original completion date of September 1st, 2020, which was extended in October of last year to go through December 1st, 2021. Due to various issues, the COVID-19 and limited staffing, the project is running behind schedule again, and a request therefore has been submitted to GFA to extend the project. And GFA has an agreement with the extension, and therefore a modification to the GFA loan is required. This is a very vanilla standard modification, and it's, it mirrors the last modification that we did. It just changes the date out. So a motion of vote is needed for the GFA loan modification to extend the project that we should need to make for us in 2020.
I made a motion that we extend the project to the date specified. And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion approved. Do we have any need for executive session? Russell, do you think we have anything?
There's certainly this time.
Anyone else?
I just have, Dr. Cleveland, session, I just have one. The ARP money and the list, if I was list, I would like to ask that we can get it ever soon, as we can to at least discuss that. I'd like to hang it over in my head and not knowing what we're going to do and how much we're going to need, so I'm just, I'm just making a request that we can do that, sir Randy.
What about a work session before the next meeting? Like maybe 4:30 to 6:30?
That's fine.
Or 5:00 to 6:30? How about 5:00 PM to 6:30, right before the next commission meeting?
Right before the next meeting?
In this room.
Okay. 5:00 to 6:30?
5 o'clock to 6:30, immediately preceding the next commission meeting in this room.
And then September 1st?
September 7th. I don't think I'll be here at that meeting, but I have all the faith, confidence in all of you.
Well, if you'd rather be, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
What if we do it September 14th meeting? That way, I know I'll be here at that meeting.
September 14th.
The, the second, the third, second meeting, September...
September 21st.
Yeah, September 21st.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was off a date.
The last meeting is September, 5 o'clock, in this room.
Sounds like a plan.
And I'll set out material beforehand.
Does anyone have anything else? Looks like Dr. Andrews wants to make a motion to the chairman.
Somebody.
Thank you all for being here.